Okay, excuse me, good evening, we're going to go ahead and get started with our board meeting for tonight, January twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-three. Welcome, everyone. I do want to start with just a short statement. I think that we would like to take a moment to extend our sympathies to our neighbors at Des Moines Public School and the community. We know that this is another tragic event that's happened, and our thoughts are with you. So can we go ahead and call the meeting to order?
Anderson.
Here.
Guman.
Here.
Hauser. Absent. Sayur Geiser.
Here.
Kent.
Here.
Mead.
Here.
Menke. I'll read a quick state mission statement. District mention, reaching all, teaching all, reaching all. District vision, Urbandale will be a school district that brings learning to life for everyone. The UCSD school board mission is to partner with stakeholders to teach all, reach all, through governance of board policy and operating protocol.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mead. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Julie, we'll get started with you.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. First agenda item under the superintendent's report is a highlight of the state report card. If you remember, this is, I'm gonna try to do both of these at one time.
Okay.
We missed a couple.
Got you.
We're missing Julie, who's out sick today, so. Okay, so some key points on this, that this is a federal and a state requirement. We're required to have ninety-five percent participation in both ELA and math. A reminder from last year, again, there was no testing in two thousand and twenty, so that data that was there is repeated from two thousand and nineteen. And our graduation data is not from two thousand and twenty-two, this is from two thousand and twenty-one, as it is a year behind. These guidelines, this, this information helps identify targeted schools. And remember, we notified families back in the fall. We do have four schools that were targeted based on the testing results. And this is where any one subgroup with twenty students or more scores as low as the five percent, as the lowest five percent of schools in the state. They also use this information to give classifications to schools as far as acceptable, commendable. The data doesn't always seem to match, but those are the requirements from the state. So how did we do? If you take a look at the English Language Arts, or ELA, participation, we went up in participation to ninety-eight point five-four. The previous year, we were at ninety-six, three, seven. That, that is a good thing, we're getting kids to the, to the test, so they can at least participate. Our math participation is the same, we went up to ninety-eight point five from ninety-six point two-six. So participation is not our problem. The graduation rate, if you take a look at the graduation rate, one thing that I can proudly say is that we do continue to exceed the state. You have the three columns on the left, or the UCSD data, and the three on the right is the state data. So we are continuing to improve our five-year graduation rate is ninety-nine point six-nine from two thousand and twenty-one, which is pretty impressive. And remember, that five-year graduation rate accounts for special education students who are entitled to go to school until they're twenty-one years old. So the idea is to get them, get to a hundred percent graduation rate. Our areas that we need to work on in this are closing the gaps with our students with disabilities and the overall rate, because we, we do have a gap between that four-year rate and the overall student rate. Our proficiency by program, if we take a look at our students with disabilities, our EL students, and compare that to what I've labeled as all students, we do consent, continue to exceed the state. We did go up in the all-student area and the special education. Unfortunately, our EL scores did go down from last year, so we have some work to do on there, as well as to close those gaps between the overall score and the programmatic scores. If we take a look at this by race and we break down our performance, we can see that we have gone, again, your three on the left, or your, your red is your two thousand and twenty, the blue is two thousand and twenty-one, and the far grayish box is two thousand and twenty-two. For all students, we again exceeded the state. We are exceeding the state in the black and the white categories. Unfortunately, our Asian, Hispanic, and multiracial scores are lower than the states. We have some work to do, again, in those categories. If we look at our math proficiency by program, our all students again exceed the state, although we did go down in math. Our EL students is lower, are lower than the state, and our students with disabilities, we did go up and exceed the state. However, we can tell, looking at those two programs, that there are some significant gaps in that data. This is gonna be on the board agenda tonight, the math new adoption. And this is one reason that it's very critical for us to have this new adoption, so that we can have a resource that's aligned to the standards that we're testing the kids on. Because right now, we're testing the kids on standards that are not adequately covered in the resources that we have. So when that comes back up, just remember what this graph looks like. If you break down the math proficiency by race again, similar to ELA, we went down in all racial subgroups other than multiracial and white. So there's some significant gaps, you can see, in the black and Hispanic again, and we need to work on closing those. So highlights of this, the positive pieces that we can pull apart, that we are meeting the ninety-five percent proficiency rate, and there are, there are districts that have trouble doing that. So that is something to be proud of, our teachers work hard to get our kids in school and make sure that they're participating. We do continue to exceed the state in overall proficiency for both ELA and math, as well as our four- and five-year graduation rates. Our average daily attendance exceeds the state in all programs and races. And for a second year, at least since I've been here, the percent of high school students that take college or post-secondary coursework is at eighty-nine point two-one percent, which far exceeds the seventy-seven percent, which is the state average. So those are some pieces to be proud of. Areas that we need to work on again, to reiterate, is closing the gaps in our Hispanic and EL, and students with disabilities in both math and ELA, and black Hispanic students, again, in ELA and math, and then students with disabilities on our four and our five-year graduation rates. So the work that's happening right now is, again, the continued implementation of the Iowa instructional framework, updating our elementary math block, and the resources, which is gonna go from pre-K to Algebra II, and a continued work on a multi-tiered system of approach, which takes the kids at that core everyday instructional to the students that need the most intensive help, or, in some cases, acceleration, because we can't forget, that's the other part of the spectrum. So those are some areas that, again, I would remind you on the math adoption, this again highlights the importance of that. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I see our current strategy is, what are we doing specifically to move both the black and Hispanic subgroups of, of our kids up in both subjects? I, I understand we're doing a lot of stuff for everyone, but what are we doing specifically, so that we can kind of even that out?
Well, I think we have to even up our core instruction first. We can put in a lot of interventions and supports, but if our everyday core instruction is not happening in the classroom, then we're adding extra things on to something that's making us spin our wheels. So I don't know if Brandon wanna add anything specific to that, I don't know that we have a exact.
Yeah, I mean, part of the process that we're beginning is the resource allocation review, which will happen later this week, which is part of the process to look at the data in each building and make sure that the resources are aligned and properly placed where they're needed. And then following that, there will be a comprehensive data review that will involve all teacher leaders in and building leaders, to make sure that we're taking a hard look at the data and identifying where our opportunities are. And following that, the same group of people will re-engage in the SAME, which is that self-assessment for MTSS system. And part of that, through all of that, an action plan will be developed that's very specific, to make sure that we're, we have a strategy and process to address these needs. That's kind of the work of this year, and then over the course of the next two years, it's about implementing that plan. So specifically, you know, I don't wanna predetermine what the outcomes of any of those things are. What I would say is, we took great care in the math curriculum review process to make sure that we were identifying instructional materials that were able to meet the needs of a wide array of students, and appeal to those students in order to increase engagement in mathematics.
So if that's a three-year process, I, I guess my, my large concern is that if you look under the math scores for our black students, it was thirty-four point nine percent proficient. That is exceptionally low, and I'm worried about those students now versus where we're gonna be three years from now.
Yeah, so some of the things that kind of parallel the math curriculum review process is, and will be forthcoming after, you know, the outcome of tonight, is to really look at the math pathway. One of the things that's possibly of concern is just access to core in time of testing. So we currently have a practice where we split algebra across two grade levels, ninth and tenth grade potentially, though those standards are set and tested in ninth grade. And so students that are accessing the content at that two-year pace, then they're being asked to complete problems that, you know, they haven't necessarily encountered. So we wanna make sure that our structure aligns to that on-grade level content. And so depending on what the outcome is tonight and early February, at our next meeting, we'll be bringing a proposal for what that could look like.
But wouldn't the schedule of doing two years, like the, the option to do ninth or tenth for algebra, wouldn't that affect all races versus just this particular? So that, that's where I'm, I'm a little confused, is that, if that's the explanation, why is their score so much lower? And it's not, it doesn't seem to be affecting everyone else the same.
Yeah, so if we looked at the demographic data of who signs up for those courses, we would see a disproportionate number of students of color that are within those courses.
Do we know why that is happening?
Well, there could be many contributing factors, one being that that's how the current setup is, as, as part of that contributing factor.
I think we can also dig deep, deeper into our equity audit to get some answers from there. I also feel like we need to really think of the true implementation science that will take at least three to five years to see any, any change in our data. So even by adopting a new curriculum, a new math curriculum, it's not going to change the data next year. It's going to take us that three to five years of implementing something new to see changes in that. And I feel strongly that that work in MTSS needs to focus on our universal instruction in all areas, including social-emotional learning, English literacy, and mathematics. And, and that's where one section, we don't have that social-emotional literacy up here, or social-emotional right now. So that, for me personally, is something that I would also like to see future numbers on, as far as, let's look in de, in depth at our conditions for learning. Let's really see how we're truly looking at that MTSS process in all three areas.
And I think that the, the first step in, in doing all of this is that core, core instruction. We can't, we can't expect teachers to bring students along if they don't have the right resources that are aligned to what we're holding the students accountable for. So yes, it's not a magic wand, it's not gonna be waved, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna have eighty percent, ninety percent, a hundred percent proficiency. That would be great, but I think that the work is being put in so that all students have access to grade-level curriculum with rigorous resources aligned to the standards. That has to be step one. So I think that the curriculum team has done a good job coming up with getting us to that point, and then that continued work is what we're gonna need to look at.
And I think looking at data, like this is one source, but also going to the students as another source. You know, asking the students, whether that be at core, whether that be in, in other ways, you know, why do you choose the classes that you do? You know, why do you choose to not pick math? Is it maybe because they didn't like the math curriculum, or they didn't like the instructor? So I think there's multiple reasons for why children choose what, the path that they do. And I think we just need to ask them, bring them to the table and ask them.
And whose responsibility is it, you know, we work off data all the time, right? And, and so, but these are just numbers, this makes our kids numbers. So when, whose responsibility is it if somebody is testing and they're not proficient? Is it the teacher then that needs to check in with that, that student? Like, where is that accountability piece, like, for every student?
I think it's both, I think it's the teacher with the student and the student with the teacher. I think it's the parent with the student and the teacher. I think it, it's a multifaceted accountability. And I, I think that, and, you know, you can't, you can't create a, a class that only has black students in it or only has Hispanic students in it. That would be completely absurd to, to do something like that. So digging into the data and figuring out, looking at the equity report, yeah, there is disproportionate amount of students of color in our lower-level math classes. We're giving them an opportunity to take a lower-level math class. So by taking that out, and I've been part of a district who took that out, and everybody thought the world would come to an end, and our, our kids would, our scores would go down even further, and they didn't. We, some of those students that we tracked actually increased their score because they were in a class exposed to grade-level curriculum with their peers. So you, you put a, you, you have a class like Algebra One A or Algebra One B that are, are, are lower-performing students. There's nobody in the class that, they don't see those peers performing at higher levels. They don't learn from each other, they're, they're capable of learning, but it, you're, you're putting them in a situation where it's making it extremely difficult to do. So to be able to target a specific race or, or program of students is, it can be difficult. That's why I think starting at that core instruction is your first step.
Okay, anything else with this, or do you want to go ahead and move into your next?
Yep, I'm gonna ask Dr. Williamson to come up, he has an extended learning program update. We, as you know, have embarked on a program review that is, that is moving along. I heard some feedback that people would like to see it move quicker, so that's something I know that Mr., Dr. Williamson will address. The one thing I do wanna say before he starts, we, we, well, I could say that during the, I'll save it for the legislature piece. Go ahead, Dr. Williamson.
You sure?
Well, I, no, no. What I do wanna say is about the categorical funding that has been suggested and proposed in the legislature, that we could divert money from ELP being one of those categorical funds, divert that money out of there in able, in order to use that for teacher salaries. People are concerned that the ELP program will go away. I am not in favor of doing that at all. That funding is funding that we, as a district, continue to spend annually. We, we bring it in and we spend it out, we do not waste that money. I would love the districts that are not spending it to give it to us, because we could use more of that money. We spend a little bit out of our general fund too, to supplement that. So just for people who are concerned about the ELP program, that is not something that we're going to do. So I'll elaborate later, but I just wanted to get that off the table.
All right, well, thank you, and, and good evening. Just wanted to share with you some quick updates on the work that the ELP team is doing or has embarked on this past spring. We collaborated with Hartland AEA, as well as other members of our district, including special education, the counseling department, district leadership, to go through an extensive ELP program review. It was really a self-reflection process, based on these categories that are listed up here. So goals and performance, identification, differentiated program, personnel, budget, professional development, review and evaluation, and advocacy and relation. And in that self-evaluation, it really looked at three core categories. What were the spaces that needed attention, that were acceptable, and things that were ideal through our lens as we continue to support the program? What we learned from that review is that there are some things that we were doing, that we, as a department, felt that we were doing really well, but there was definitely some areas or some spaces for growth. And that's where the conversation really kinda, kinda kicked off, if you will. Following that program, following that meeting, we did invite some stu, or excuse me, some parent stakeholders in to have a collaborative conversation with myself, with Dr. Daca, and individuals from AEA that kinda helped facilitate that process. And we got some really good feedback from the parent groups, where we were able to take them through the SART. And they were allow, they were able to see what our self-reflection was. And we, again, we took their, their feedback, and we really identified some, some particular things surrounding ELP that we really wanted to focus on. One of the things that bubbled to the surface was our identification processes. What were some of the things that we're currently doing, or what were the practices that we're currently doing to identify our, to identify our students, our program alignment goals and our standard goals? Those were the things that the ELP team wanted us to kind of lift up. And then the parent, the parent group really wanted us to look at identification, differentiated program, and professional development. The work of the ELP team this spring, or excuse me, this fall, one thing that we really did very early on in the year was really look at, look at our numbers. And that's why we really wanted to focus on identification. When our, when we look at our numbers, our ELP is serving eighty-five percent of the students that are being served are white. One point seven percent are black, five point seven are Asian-American, four point two are Hispanic, and then three point two are multiracial. So what do we need to do differently to cast a much wider net? So we really spent some time learning, reading, researching, what are the best practices surrounding identification? I also belong to a focused group of different ELP leaders, again, in collaboration with the AEA, with the ELP director from Des Moines Public Schools, from Waukee, from West Des Moines. And we're really doing a lot of good collaborating on things that we need to do differently as a, as a community to support our ELP, our ELP program. So again, we really dove in as a department to our identification processes. We researched some, some standardized assessments, if you will, that we could utilize to potentially cast a much wider net for our students. So two of those assessments that we implemented at our, at Olmstead were the Naglari non-verbal assessment, as well as the COGAT. And so we've, we've done that, we've collected the data, and we're looking at making some recommendations here to utilizing one of those assessments to, again, help us capture students that we want to support. Again, we, as you can see, the action steps that we have taken over the course of this past, this past fall semester was educating ourselves, consulting with different buildings, with different leaders across the community to figure out what could we be doing differently? What are we not looking at, or what do we, again, what do we need to look at differently? I've talked briefly about the Naglari and the COGAT. But then the future things, the future actions that we wanna take, that we're working on this spring, is our standards alignment through that self-reflection process. We learned that the standards that we are utilizing, they are not aligned across the system. So we wanna make sure that those standards are aligned, we wanna make sure that we are being reflective in our program goals. And asking ourselves the question, are our goals, are we living up to those goals? Are we achieving those goals, or do we need to reexamine what those goals are? And then what's the desired outcome of ELP? One thing that I continue to hear from our stakeholders is that if a student enters the ELP program, what's the expectation? What should our parents be receiving, what should our students be receiving, et cetera? And so one of the things that I've tasked our, our, our ELP team is, is being able to articulate to our families what it is that our parents and our students should be expecting when they're in our ELP program. So that's, that's the work that, that we continue to do. It's, it's a, it's a program that's definitely going to take some time. The way I have it kind of crafted out right now, it's gonna be a two, three-year process. But hopefully, our, we wanna make sure that our, our goals are aligned with our standards, which are aligned to our outcomes. So that's the work that we're, that we're engaging in right now.
And I would also add that we'll be bringing to the board in February, our goal is to have one ELP teacher in every elementary school, because right now, we know that we're not servicing all of the advanced students in elementary schools. So we're working that out right now, and when that plan is finalized, bring that too, so that the teachers are not going back and forth between schools and that they're there all day to service students the way that they should be servicing students. They can't right now because they are not full-time in a building, and that's very difficult to do. And we know that there are kindergarten, first grade students, second grade students that are advanced that could benefit from services that we're not currently able to provide to them. So that's a, a piece that I'm excited about coming up with the final plan. So we, we have been working on this, I do realize the community, it's a very public-facing program, and it's very important. I do want to assure the community, we wanna do this right. We don't want to rush through and say, let's take the Naglari, let's take the COGAT. I mean, there's, there's a lot of research behind both of those assessments. I think, you know, the Naglari one benefit is for students whose English is not their first language, because it's a non-verbal test, it's based on pictures, it's based on something that's not gonna penalize a student if English isn't their first language. So I know there's a lot more conversation to be had with that in the ELP team. So we just wanna make sure we reiterate that commitment and keep going. And then I think your next one is questions.
Yeah.
Is, is the work that's being done with the MTSS kind of process, are we also really looking at that tip of the triangle with our ELP students as well? Because oftentimes, people think that tip of the triangle, or that intensive service is just our students with disabilities, but we really have to hone in also on our students with those advanced learning needs. So as you're reviewing and doing this MTSS work, is, is that in the conversations? Is that part of this action plan here?
Yes, and as a part of the, the SART, our, our review, that was one of the things that bubbled to the surface with our, with our team, was to make sure that they are heavily involved in the MTSS process, if you will. So we're definitely gonna have them involved in that process when students are identified or they kind of navigate through that MTS system, making sure that those students receive the support that they need to be successful. So absolutely.
I just have a question, like, are there target dates, a timeline? Something that in May, when the parent group got together, I was there too. Like, we were involved at that point. The people that I know in this group are not, you know, they don't wanna sit back and wait two to three years to see the final product. Like, how are you going to? Like, how are you going to keep your parents involved and up, up to date on the progress and what's happening so that they can really support, understand, and?
I, I think the first thing that, that I can do or that we can do is continue to have updates provided to the board on a, on a much more regular basis. I know it was a request of Dr. Daka to make sure that that parent group that was involved received some type of communication. So we got that sent out. So just finding other ways that we can continue to share the work that is happening. I know I have a goal is to make sure that these three action steps are, are completed by the end of the year. That's lofty. I will say that. It is very lofty, but that's something that I'm going to hold myself accountable to. Definitely with the program goals and, and the standards alignment, that's a, that's a big thing. Because all of our students are navigating through the system. We want to make sure that we hold ourselves to the same standards. And right now, we're looking at the NAGC standards, which is the National Association for Gifted Children. And so we are currently in the process of action planning that out. So we're diving into the standards right now and identifying those standards that we want our kids to be able to know, understand, and do. Putting those into action plans that we can continue to share with everyone.
Thanks, Brian. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Your last update?
So the legislative update, we, as you might remember, if you followed the last board meeting, we agreed to bring in a legislative update to provide the community with information so that they could make their own determination on whether or not they supported some of the legislative action that has been proposed. I did include for the public and anyone on the board, or anybody that wanted it, a link to a bill tracker that you can go and see the plethora of bills that were introduced by both the Senate and the House, the study bills and the ones introduced by the governor. I'm not going to cover every single one of those here. I'm just going to cover the big ones that seem to have potential effect, direct effect on Urbandale District. First one is the one everybody's been talking about, of course, and that's the educational savings account, which is also for vouchers. There's a proposed three-year phase-in plan, really two-year phase-in plan. The first year of eligibility, which would be, if this is passed, would be next year. And students who are entering kindergarten would be able to apply for these vouchers or sign up. I'm not sure how, what terminology that would be. Public school students that are in public school this year can also try to go or choose to go to a non-public school next year. That would impact the district because what we're getting ready to work on next year's budget is based on the enrollment from this year. It's always a year behind. So if we have students that we're counting right now in our enrollment, and then they decide next year to go to a private school and that money goes with them, then that's money we've already budgeted for. And I think it's worth pointing out to you that if we had fifteen students that left, they're not all leaving the same building in the same grade level. So we're not going to lose any staffing. We're not going to have any staffing efficiencies because of that. You're going to have kids that are, are going to be in random locations, and there's not going to be a way we can cut any staff, and that's our biggest expenditure. The other way that students would qualify are students that are not in a public school right now, but they're in a private school or non-public school, and they're three hundred percent, below the three hundred percent poverty line, which is approximately eighty-three thousand dollars for a family of four. The second year, those same qualifications are in place, except the poverty level is four hundred percent below poverty level. And that's about a hundred eleven thousand dollars for a family of four. After year three, starting in year three and thereafter, anyone is eligible. So some thoughts on that, trying to give you factual statements. Seventy-five percent of Iowa schools are in rural areas with no access to private schools, so those students would be left out. There's a hundred and thirty-four rural schools that already have closed and diverted dollars from public to private, and more will potentially close. We're taking away money from four hundred eighty-five thousand kids in public schools, which could increase class sizes and actually have fewer opportunities because the funding is going to have to come from somewhere. Public schools take all kids. We, you enroll and we will teach you. Private schools have the ability to pick and choose who they would like to accept. So that's one component. Iowa parents already have choices. They have open enrollment. They can, they can go to any district. It was made easy last year for students that, parents who don't want their children in a particular district, they can open enroll somewhere else. They can consider private schools themselves. There are charter schools. They're in, in some areas. A hundred million dollars in public tax dollars already goes to support non-public schools. Private sector families, no matter the income beginning year three, could send their kids to private school with public tax dollars. And it's an expensive program that would hurt ability to fund other priorities like property tax reform, implementing income tax already passed, tax cuts already passed, economic development, community college, and of course, public schools. Another proposal was to spend leftover categorical funding, which I just mentioned for ELP. Two other funds are funds that they are also attempting or proposing, and that is a professional development fund and a teacher TLC funding. First of all, we, like I said, spend our gifted funding. We don't waste that. We don't let that sit there. We could use more gifted funding. But I do realize there are a lot of communities, a lot of districts that don't spend it for a lot of probably good reasons. They don't get enough to do substantial impacts to their program. They might be shared with another district, and that, that's, that district's difficulty unfortunately. But the government sees, the state sees, all that funding that's not spent. But I don't think they're taking into consideration the districts that do spend that funding. If we did have rollover funding, it'd be what it would be called, it doesn't make sense to take that funding and put that into salaries because salaries are an ongoing thing. I can't raise a teacher's salary this year and say, oh, I had this extra money, so here you go. Because then the next year, if I don't have that extra money, what am I, am I supposed to take their salary down? Which means I would have to, if I said, oh, we have a hundred thousand dollars left, let's put that out somewhere in salaries, which wouldn't amount to much in a district our size. I would have to commit that hundred thousand dollars coming out of those funds again the following year. And that means programmatic cuts where I, I don't believe they're appropriate. Professional development is one of those funds, and I think one thing that's getting lost on the state might be that COVID over the last three years has not allowed us to travel. It's not allowed teachers to take time out of their school week because there's no subs. There's been a lot of restrictions that we haven't been able to use that money. We have opened that up a little bit, and we take the requests from staff as they come in, but we still have to be very diligent. I can't send twenty teachers off to a conference when I don't have the subs for those classrooms. So there are other factors that are playing into why districts have money that's left over. So again, we will not be taking advantage of that. We already have the option to, with the exception of the TQ money, which is the professional development money. We have a flex fund. We, we can come to the board and say, like we did last year, we want to take some money out of this account and use it for this purpose and put it in the flex fund. So we can do that. There's, if there's one-time things like the teacher bonuses for staff who were not included in the governor's proposal last year. We, we can already do those things, those one-time things. So we don't plan to take advantage of that. There's a House File Five that covers more about parental rights, similar to what you probably heard last year, about parent access to curriculum, knowledge of how to opt out, how to request books to be removed. And the other piece is the US Citizenship Exam to be required as the assessment for high school government and civics classes. I don't remember that one from last year, so that may be new or may not be. And then there's finally some LGBTQ plus proposed legislation around parental notification. It prohibits a school district to accommodate gender identities that are different from their identity at birth. Gender identity education, there's some language in there. And again, these are not all of the proposals that are in the legislation right now. If you go click that bill tracker, you can go in and read more specifics. The voucher one, I know was edited today. If you click in there, you'll see specific lines. It's really, I think, some semantics and some other existing legislation that would have to change to allow some of those pieces to work. So I would encourage the public to use that link to go educate themselves and read about those bills and what they entail, as well as the other ones. There's some that don't have anything to do with public education that you might also be interested in, so.
Do we have any idea how many, how many students within the Urbandale District currently attend private schools?
Well, Dowling has thirteen hundred roughly students, not all from Urbandale. I don't know.
I didn't know if there was any way to find that information, just to have.
Carrie, is that something, I know we could do it in Wisconsin, but is that something we could do here? We find out school?
If the non-publics wanted to provide that information, that's where we would need to get that information. I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's publicly collected or published anywhere.
And it's difficult to say what the impact would be.
That's, that's what I'm getting to without, without knowing how many students.
You'd almost have to know for year one, the, the demographic financial situation for students of Urbandale who are in private schools. I don't know that we can get that information, so.
And I guess, I mean, it's not year one or two that I'm really concerned.
It's year three.
Because, because once year three hits, we have no idea. I thi, I think another key thing to point out is that if a student were to take those funds from our district but then decide to re-enroll after the beginning of the school year, that money doesn't travel back.
And I don't know that that's been discussed. I know that there was discussion in the fall about all of the open enrollment, where people would go one district to another, and how do we bill by the day, by, and I don't, I don't know that they've, I haven't seen that in the bill. I also didn't read a hundred pages. I mean, there's a lot in there. So I don't know. It's really hard to tell.
In, in your opinion, which bills do you feel are going to have the greatest impact on our schools either?
Potentially the vouchers. I, I'm particularly concerned about next year, like I said, because we're budgeting right now based on this year's enrollment. So if students do leave, that, not knowing, we're shooting in the dark, I don't, I don't know what that would look like. We do also have to consider, I don't know what open space these non-public schools have either. So, you know, is Des Moines Christian full? I, I understand they are, that there's, there's waiting lists to get in. I, I don't know if that's accurate. That's hearsay. I know St. Pius is, is pretty full. So I don't know that there's a whole bunch of places that have a lot of open seats either.
So I think, you know, all of us, you know, we're pretty careful to make sure that, that we're being financially responsible of the decisions that we make that affect our district. And so I think as we see those bills come across, our, our bills, not the bills in the legislature, we're going to have to scrutinize those, even more so than some of us already do, knowing that there's that impact. I guess another question I have for you, just referring to House File Eight, which is a school district shall not provide any program, curriculum, material, task, survey, questionnaire, activity, announcement, promotion, or instruction of any kind relating to gender identity, sexual orientation to students in kindergarten through grade three. Do you feel that this bill affects any, or addresses any particular problem currently facing education?
I'm not aware that that curriculum is part of K through three myself.
So the, one of the concerns I have is it really limits teacher speech in a few areas. And, and, and so one of my questions is, let's say one of our LGBTQ teachers has a family photo on their desk, and they're prohibited from, you know, I have a picture of my family at, at my school, and every once in a while a student will say, hey, who's this? And I'll say, that's my, my son, or that's my husband, and there'll be questions. And, and I'll have to do some, some teaching and follow-up around that. According to this legislation, I would be prohibited to do that.
So Dan, I think really right now, we can't really get into conversations about that until the legislation is passed.
Well, so my question would be, do we encourage our students to speak up against bullying at schools?
Well, I think that that's part of the reporting system that we have.
Do you believe that this particular bill and, and other attempts by our legislature to marginalize the LGBTQ community as well as students and families of color, do you feel that that's bullying?
So first of all, I don't think that Rosalie needs to answer that truthfully because.
What, what do you feel?
This is, this, I, I don't need to answer that either.
Okay.
Because, because, hey, hold on, Dan. Hold on, please. Please.
Sure.
I'm having a really hard time right now with you bringing in your personal agenda to our school board floor.
Was it a personal agenda when you asked questions about the ELP or the other parts of Rosalie's?
But this is legislation that hasn't even passed yet. Right? So the legislative update is to update our community on what's out there. And then if we need to get to a point where we have future discussion items because it passes, then that's when we need to talk about it on the board.
Should not stand up to bullying.
I think what we. I don't think that's what we're saying.
And what we agreed on doing in the last work session was to give the public the information. So I'm saying, here, public, in person and on TV, here's the information. Read it and educate yourself. And as it passes through the system, it, it'll change. And that's, that's for the public to make a decision on where they stand on it.
I agree that the public should make the decision. The public should be involved. We had a very lengthy conversation when our board attorney was here for a session that was not recorded, where many board members expressed different views on, on whether the board should make resolutions or statements, either in support or opposing legislation. That was a long conversation that all of us spoke, you know.
And we left.
And it was not recorded for the public. So I think in the public's interest, we could have that same discussion while it's being recorded.
But we left that session with the understanding that the board would personally advocate and not as a board advocate.
Some of us felt that way. There are three members of this board that feel that we should stand up to bullying by the legislature. There are three members of this board that feel that we should protect public education and the public dollars going towards public schools. There are four members of this board that do not feel that we should make public statements, that we should not be leaders in our community. I have, I have, excuse, excuse me, hold on. I'm still talking. I didn't have any other comments for the other parts of Dr. Daka's report, and I just want to have my opportunity to speak. So I've, I've proposed a couple of board resolutions opposing vouchers, which Dr. Daka has elaborated to the dangers that that poses to our district financially. I've proposed a resolution that our board should adopt, standing up to bullying of vulnerable communities, standing up for the LGBTQ students, the, the children of LGBTQ Urbandale citizens. And only three members of this board feel that, that that community and that our district finances are important enough that we stand up and make our point known. That would be Jason and Ashley and myself. Now, if other board members would like to stand up publicly to bullying by the, the state legislature, stand up publicly to, to protect public tax dollars for public schools, I would invite, you know, Catherine and Bree and Rachel and Jenny to, to stand with Jason and Ashley and I in standing up for public education.
So you made your point.
I have.
And I think that if you would like an agenda item added, that you need to go through the proper process to add that agenda item. We have published this agenda on Thursday. So this is not part of this discussion. This is a legislative update. If, if you choose to personally advocate.
Oh, I am.
I understand that. And I am also on my social media platforms as Brianna Sayar Geiser, not as the Urbandale School Board.
And I, and I think that's unfortunate.
Dan, Dan, I feel like right now you're bullying me and some members of the board to skew in your way, in what you want.
I think we need to stand up for non-public schools.
Our attorney has advised us, our school board attorney has advised us to not go this route unless it is an agenda item that we have made public to the agenda. And you even as a community member can put your name down to speak as a community member in our public comments.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, there's, there's a bottleneck right now where three members of our board are concerned. are concerned enough about the finances in our district, are concerned enough about our legislature bullying marginalized communities, but there's a bottleneck where we can't even get a discussion, because four people have decided that even though there's a large segment of our community would like to hear us have this conversation, there are people that are using their own agenda to prevent those discussions from happening in our board.
So Dan, if there's a large number in the community, then I welcome them to come and speak at public comment at our next board meeting.
And we've limited our public comment, and that, that's a whole other thing.
We only have one person signed up for this evening.
I understand.
So go ahead, Rachel.
I, I just wanna tell you, I don't appreciate you telling the community how I feel. You and I have never discussed this. I've never said anything close to what you're telling everybody in our community how I feel. It is very disrespectful.
Tell us, Rachel, do you support?
No, we did not need to do that here.
I support public schools. End of the story.
Do you support LGBTQ?
I have been advocating for our children, our staff, our schools.
Except for when it comes to the legislature or the board.
But we agreed that there's a form that we left the meeting, and we agreed to, Julie created the form where you will put in suggested topics, and if four people put the same topic, it gets to be on the agenda. Barring that happening, eight sixty-eight that you made clear was gonna be your pathway. That's the next pathway.
Yes.
Unless at the agenda-setting meeting, it's decided that that should be on there, yes, but if that doesn't happen, the only other way to do it is eight sixty-eight.
Right, and not bring to the agenda that we already have published certain things that you would like to, because you think this is your way of doing this. If you wish to follow the procedures that you've outlined, then please feel free to do so, and we are moving on to the next agenda item. Students, it's your turn.
Point, point of order, point of order. We follow Robert's rules, right?
We do, and our attorney has recommended us not do that.
So Robert's rules, Robert's rule says that you need a two-thirds vote to end or limit discussion.
But the attorney said.
This is not a discussion item that is on the agenda, so we do not need to follow Robert's rules.
Have we been discussing it?
There should be no motions and no votes. That's the advice of the attorney.
So, so do we follow Robert's rules?
Dan?
Chapter twenty-one.
This is our la, this is the last time we're gonna talk about this. We are moving on to the next agenda item, or you will be asked to leave, and we will take a recess.
My point of order is that
Dan.
Do we follow Robert's rules in our meetings?
Yes, we do, and this is it. The students, it's your turn.
And so we do follow Robert's rules, point of order. According to Robert's rules, you need a two-thirds vote.
We will take a recess at this point. Please, please, community, we'll take five minutes. Please pause the live stream. We will take this to the room next door in a closed session. Can I have somebody make that motion?
We can't get a session.
Okay. Well, we will take a recess and just pause for five minutes to get everyone back on the same page, and then we'll be moving to our student representative report. Just to kind of wrap up that previous conversation, I think that if any board member.
My, my point of order would be that we follow Robert's rules, and you need a two-third. If you wanna make a motion to limit or close the debate, we can certainly do that.
There's not, there's not, there's not a action item on the table.
Nothing about Robert's rules mentions an act of, an action item regarding any discussion.
Rosalie, do you wanna read what the Robert's rules say that you just said? Thank you.
Sorry. Policy two fourteen, Rules of Order, parliamentary procedures are not provided for in these policies or by statute shall be determined by the most recent revision, version of Robert's Rules of Orders revised. However, it is not necessary to rise in order to make a motion. If informal discussion is permitted while a motion is pending, which is not the situation, motions may be seconded by any member of the board not making the motion. The president need not rise. The president can speak in discussions without rising or leaving the chair. Votes, votes can be taken only on motions made and seconded. The public may speak on an agenda item at the time it is presented for the board discussion. Prior to that, at the board's discretion, and if an agenda item is discussed and a board member wishes to have additional information from the public, the board may at its discretion ask any person for that information. The order in which, sorry, it's cut off, in which votes, the order in which the board members' names will be called for votes will be as follows.
I haven't heard anything that limits discussion, and according to Robert's rules, it's the, it's a
So Dan, we are going to finish this conversation.
So we do not follow Robert's rules.
Please stop with your constant, I, we have taught, no, you can't. This is not an agenda item, and it has not been notified of the public. If you wish to add an agenda item, or if you wish to have public comment.
I'm speaking to an agenda item.
If you, you are not the
I'm speaking to the legislative update.
You are speaking on something that you would like to have an action item on. We are
I'm just discussing. I'm not asking us to take any action.
We are moving on to the students' representative report.
Point of order.
Student representative report, please.
Do we follow Robert's rules in our meetings?
Dan, we're not, I will ask you to leave.
You can ask me to leave.
Dan, I'm gonna stand up for bullying. Right now, you're bullying Bree.
I'm not bullying Bree.
You are, absolutely.
We follow Robert's rules.
And the Robert's rules that Rosalie just read revised.
She read a board policy. She didn't read what's in Robert's rules. Robert's rule states that to limit or close debate, you need to make a motion. It needs to be seconded, and it needs to require a two-thirds vote. I'm not bullying, I'm just asking for clarification about what process do we follow in our board?
So what do you want discussed that we haven't already discussed? Because we discussed several things at our last meeting. We discussed already, you've had multiple opportunities so far this evening to discuss, even in our previous meeting earlier this month, you had the floor several times and had the floor in closed session several times. So what I would encourage you to do, especially if we go back to some of our work sessions not too long ago, when we were talking about collaborative teaming, respect for everyone on the board.
Including the minority.
I would like to suggest we move on. There are a lot of individuals that are here in the audience that are giving their time.
In the, in the, in the interest of solidarity.
Yes, in the interest of that.
I will agree to move on. However, for the next meeting, I would like some clarification on the procedural rules that we follow as a board.
We can absolutely do that, and you can also follow the same procedures for if you would like to add public comment, if you would like to put your name in for public comment, if you would like to.
I'm entitled to speak in a discussion as a board.
Correct, but if you want something that's not on the agenda, it can be part of the public comment.
I can, we can discuss any agenda item as a board.
We will clarify for you this week the information that you're seeking, but I do suggest that we move on. Students have to get a good night's sleep before they go to school tomorrow. I don't want to keep them here any longer than they need to.
Fair enough. Let's move on.
Thank you. Students, please. Would you please also state your name and what age you are, just so that the community also knows who you are?
Hi, I'm Angelica Chisom-Cardenas, and I'm sixteen. I'm a junior at Urbendale High School.
I'm Ava McConnell. I'm seventeen. I'm a senior at Urbendale High School.
And how would you like the board to address either one of you? Would you like it by your first names or?
Yep.
Okay, just want to, just want to, no?
Hi, everyone. I hope everyone is staying warm. I know it's very cold outside. In our statement today, we would like to answer some of the questions submitted by the school board members. The first one is, is there anything you are seeing in the building that is going well that may have not been publicized related to students? I know that many clubs and activities have been going very well. Students have put so much time and effort into these clubs. For example, Leo and Key Club met up over the weekend to volunteer for Meals for the Heartland. We packed two hundred and ninety boxes full of food for people who need around the world. In addition, the student senate has been working hard planning Winter Formal, which is happening this weekend, something that the whole school is very excited about. Core is planning some elementary school visits to teach about Black History Month. They are planning to read educational books to kindergarten through third graders and give presentation to the fourth and fifth graders. Students participating in clubs have not only been beneficial to students, but also the UHS community as a whole.
And then to continue with another question that was submitted, are there any areas in your building or in other buildings that may need attention? I can only specifically speak on high school. I've discussed with my students about how they feel about our building. Students really want to see more of the flexible seating pods like we have on our West End Science Pod. I've heard nothing but positive feedback about the space. It gives students the ability to break away from the classroom, work in small groups, or study. It provides a really safe and relaxing environment for students to work in. Overall, students have done really well with respecting their comfort, comfortable setting, by keeping it clean and organized, picking up after themselves. Students really want to see this implemented more around the building, just to help make the pods feel less sterile. I also talked to a lot of other student body. We would love to see the possibility of more student-based stuff on the walls, like maybe displaying more of our clubs that aren't heard of as much. I know we have TVs around the building, but just maybe putting them out there, like our stuff on the, like, we have a big painting, like a mural of our fishing club and our best buddies' club. And then also just more displays of student artwork to make things in the hallways more personable. On a different note, today we began implementing locking our far L M C doors. This provides another means of safety in our building. Students have spoken multiple times about safety concerns with those stairwells in particular. By locking those doors, it should provide students with a more secure feeling while they're in the building.
To answer another question, which is, do students feel male and female-specific activities and sports are created equal at Urbendale? In short, it's complicated. I have talked to multiple students, especially girls, who feel that there is a gap of resources and attention between the two genders. For example, one person told me that the girls' soccer team used hand-me-downs boys' jerseys. They were granted new jerseys, but only just recently. Another girl, who is a volleyball player, explained that she thinks for the most part they are decently even. However, it feels that that occasionally football is prioritized over a majority-girl sport like volleyball. For example, many of her teammates found holes in their uniforms after just one or two games. Even football players have expressed the understanding that football is prioritized more than female sports. On the other hand, some say that it is simply a difference about how each team utilizes their money. This person recalled that a few years ago, people were complaining that the boys' track team had nicer warm-up sweaters than the girls', but he explained that the boys' track team shared with the cross-country team, while the girls' cross-country team and track team each had their own sweaters. Overall, there's a large difference in opinion from all sides of the spectrum. Some say yes, that there is a disparity, some say no. Overall, more research is needed. We will continue this conversation at a later date.
I love the idea of the artwork around. I was up in the art area last week or the week before in the, outside the photography class. There's beautiful photographs. The photography class has got talent, and it was
Yeah, and that's new this year. We haven't displayed our photography work like that in the past, so having it up like right on the walls, like, I see it every time I pass, and, you know. I was in photography, so like seeing all those pictures is really cool to see.
Right. Another thing about my, I was just at a DMAC campus today teaching a group of teachers, and they have multiple areas that are like mental health awareness areas, that also can publicize the QR codes for safety and also how to get support, like our student assistance program and things like that. So I wonder about, outside of the counseling area, do we have multiple areas within our buildings, buildings, not just high school, where we are promoting that you can get help for mental health if you need it, and I think that might be another area that could be really beneficial to our student body of all ages.
Yeah, and I definitely think like incorporating how at the high school, we implemented like that flexible seating where we kind of painted the walls, and there's like whiteboards and high desks and flexible seating, like introducing that, like, I don't, I haven't been in the middle school in quite some time, but like integrating that to like their pods, which I know are just lined with like blue chairs and computers when I was last there, like, you know.
We've got that flexible seating in the classrooms.
Yeah, it's like, you know, providing them with a little bit, like, well, this is what high schools seem like.
Thanks for the update, and everyone. Thanks for the update. And everyone attending window formal, have fun, be safe. Next will be our facilities update.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Hi there. Basically, we completed a roof. The membrane is all on now, so that's a big milestone that we're growing. Excheer and interior framing is now complete. On Area A, first floor, they're half-painted. Porcelain tile's done. We did start sealing right last week. Second floor porcelain tile is complete. Tape and finish is completing and the painting is starting. The windows have been installed. We did get the new FEMA windows and they have been installed. The gym overhead electrical and ductwork is complete. Painting's complete inside the gym. Kitchen mechanical and plumbing is basically complete. Electrical roughens ongoing. We did set the large kitchen equipment, the hoods and the walk-ins last month. The first coat painter's been through the area. Quarry tile's gonna start here at the end of the, early February. And we're gonna start setting kitchen equipment late February. Mechanical room, we're continuing with the roughens and we are gearing up, having conversations about system startups, which is scheduled for late March. Area B, all the framing is complete. Roughen's complete. Mason's finishing up the north elevation. Curtain wall's ongoing and the storefront on the north elevation's going. Commons area, the ductwork is complete. Overhead electrical is continuing. The learning stairs framing is started. On Area D, the east side, second floor framing is complete and it did start. MEP roughing is complete. Drive wall installation has started. And first floor, the framing is complete and they are doing roughin' right now. That's pretty much where we're at.
And also, I'd like to note that Laura Justman and Derek Wilkins are working on getting all of the teachers a tour of the building, I believe the end of February was the dates that she chose.
Like the fifteenth, the twentieth, the thirteenth, fifteenth, and the twentieth.
And I, Brian doesn't know this because we haven't met this week, but I wanted to also take the board on a tour. I was hoping to do it more March, April, to get it a little bit more completed. So look for that to come. I don't know if we'll do a, kind of throw out some dates and see where the majority can go, but we do need to coordinate it with Brian's team. But I think you should have an opportunity to see it as well. For the community, I would encourage you to drive by. Don't go in, but drive by and take a look at it. The brick's going up on the building and it just looks, looks like a building. And it's exciting to see it moving along as it has. I know there are pieces that are behind schedule, but there are other pieces above schedule or ahead of schedule. So they're juggling it and as far as we still have the same completion date. I ask all the time. I know they're tired of hearing that, but we're still on track. So look for that, for the board to have a tour.
So maybe, Rosalie, we might be able to do like a five-thirty or something before a board meeting night or something.
Um, we'll have to, whatever Brian's team, because we can't do it without them being there.
When it gets more, when it's lighter later.
That's a little hard in that darkness.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions from anyone? Thank you. Uh, next, is there a public comment?
We have one speaker, Ms. Haller, if you'd like to come up. I didn't bring the timer, so I'll just tell you when three minutes, I'll go like this, when you're like fifteen seconds.
It'll take me one minute.
Great. And will you just introduce yourself to the board and your address, please?
Yep. Good evening. I'm Kim Haller. I live at sixty-one oh eight Northwest Fiftieth Street in Johnston. I'm a third-grade teacher at Rolling Green. I'm here tonight to publicly request that you reconsider Board Policy zero-nine-two-one as it pertains to the naming of Rolling Green School next year. I did not come here tonight with a petition of names or a group of people to support me as the intent of my original letter to you was not to create district drama, but to find a compromise. I understand wanting to preserve the Olmsted and Valerius names as they are important to the history of Urbando schools. I can also appreciate respecting Karen Acres as it's the name that represents their neighborhood. What I am hoping is that you will also see the importance of Rolling Green to the history of Urbando School District, and I told myself I want to cry because this is so important to me. For seventeen years, we have provided something unique to the district and rare to the state. Our project-based learning focus and our year-round calendar draw students from all over the metro. Families choose to send their kids to Rolling Green because of the experience we provide. Rolling Green should be represented in the name of our new school and not just in a dedication area. It should remain in the forefront for the future families and students that want to experience what we offer. For that reason, I ask you to consider naming us Rolling Green at Karen Acres. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I believe there is a response back from Catherine via email saying she could place that on the agenda.
She was to come to public comment?
Yeah, I think that was her coming to public comment was what she was responding to. But it could be, if we follow that, we could add that to an agenda topic for next time if necessary by following the procedure of adding that and then we'll have that discussion.
I'm supportive.
So then you can add that to the, our procedures. Okay, we have a new action item. Is this yours, Steve?
It's mine. Administration recommends a resolution for a public hearing to consider approving a transfer of funds from the childcare fund to the general fund in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand. This transfer would move part of the dollars transferred from the October twenty-first, or twenty-second, excuse me, of two thousand twenty-two, from the general, or no, it was from twenty-one. The amount that the general fund transferred to the childcare fund. And this would just set the public hearing date for February sixth for that action.
Is there any discussion or do I have a motion?
So just to clarify, we're, I understood what we did in twenty-twenty-one. We're just moving funds.
Funds back, yes.
Because we've now got revenue in the childcare.
Adventure Time qualified for some stabilization money.
Yep.
They got one point five million last, at the end of last year, and then another four hundred thousand in like August, so that money is, is good in that fund now. So we're basically just taking some of that money that we transferred back.
Super, okay.
Which will also help in establishing that ratio, solvency ratio back. That's just one of the actions to help that.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion for the hearing date. I would move for the public hearing date to be set for February sixth of twenty-twenty-three.
Anderson, second.
And then Steve lets do a roll call because of the amount of money. Yes, please.
All right. Anderson?
Yes.
Gutman?
Yes.
Hauser, absent. Sayur Geyser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Pass.
Then we typically put that at the beginning of the meeting and the vote would be later in the meeting. So if the public wanted to comment, then that, they would have the opportunity.
Yep.
Okay, so let's move into our action items. The first action item is the dropout prevention at-risk application. Was there any other questions or further discussion, or can I have a motion, please?
I'm going to move to approve.
Cantor, second.
Roll call again.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
All right. Anderson?
Yes.
Gutman?
Yes.
Hauser, absent. Sayur Geyser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, so that passes six to zero. Uh, next action item is the ten-year capital projects plan. If there's no questions, may I have a motion?
I guess my question is, I don't know. I, I'm just concerned about making a ten-year plan involving financial decisions until we're clear what the legislature does with the voucher bill.
These are not general funds. These are bonded funds and capital projects.
Really no bearing on.
Capital funding, so that wouldn't.
That would have no bearing on that.
Take that.
Okay.
Is our motion?
Kent will move to approve the ten-year capital projects plan.
Menke will second.
Go ahead, Steve, a roll call, please.
Yep, we'll go, start again. We'll go, we'll start at the bottom. We'll go Menke.
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Sayur Geyser?
Yes.
Hauser, absent.
Gutman? Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That passes.
That has passed also. Okay, our next action item is the panorama survey sweep proposal. Is there any additional questions for Brandon on this item? If not, may I have a motion?
Anderson moved to approve. Cantor, second.
All right. Menke?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Sayur Geyser?
Yes.
Hauser, absent. Gutman?
Given the unknown financial situation of our district pending the voucher bill, I vote no.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Okay, the next agenda item is our new math curriculum. I know that we spent quite a bit of time on that at our work session two weeks ago. And Brandon and his team gave us a pretty in-depth review of what they had proposed. And I know some board members also had some additional time to look at some things. Was there anything additional that we have questions about, or can we have a motion?
I think there was some additional information added. Do you want to cover that before the vote so that they?
Thanks.
There was some financial components that he hadn't had the firm pricing on.
Yeah, so just the timeline of when the decision was made. And then we had worked with teacher groups that were part of the process to identify which publications they felt would be most supportive of the work. And so what you'll see is a proposal regarding the purchase of Going with McGraw-Hill for six through Algebra II. And so you can see both the initial cost to acquire all of the teacher materials and the consumables in year one. And then what it looks, what's the estimated McGraw-Hill cost on subsequent years. The reason why it says estimated is because if there's a price increase, that would change that cost. With Imagine Learning, you know, looking at the one year, we could go one year and pay by each year, although there would be a financial benefit of moving forward with a seven-year agreement. We could do a seven-year agreement with McGraw-Hill, but they require the whole amount paid upfront. So that wouldn't be as physically as responsible. Imagine Learning, however, worked with us and said that if we paid for the online platform upfront, that the consumables, we could pay year by year. So that gives us a cost savings over that seven-year period of about fifty-eight thousand dollars just because they are able to cut us a better price on the online platform that students would have access to. So you'll see then what years two through seven are, would cost for Imagine Learning, which is very comparable to what we currently pay each year for the consumables for everyday math for K-five. And then estimated McGraw-Hill price is slightly above what we pay each year currently and what we're purchasing for the consumables for six through Algebra II.
Was seven year the only option?
Nope, we could, we could have reduced the year. It's just then that price increased each time. And our curriculum review process is set at a seven-year per board policy, and so that's why we shot for the seven-year. But, you know, that if the board wanted to go into a different, you know, I'd be happy to work through that with the company. So it's a four-dollar per-student cost savings if we do the seven-year.
I wanted to publicly thank Mrs. Hauser's not here, but I really wanted to thank her publicly for the time that she spent explaining, going over the curriculum with me. And I had some reservations and she was very thorough in answering those. And I really appreciated that you guys, as the math committee, had some of the same concerns and have already kind of have a plan in place of how you're going to prepare teachers for that. And so I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the time that she spent kind of going through that with me. So I, I just wanted to thank her, but she's not here tonight. So thanks to the team for thinking through some of those same things that I felt concerned about. I know you've already addressed and gone through, so I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, and I would, I would want to, you know, be transparent. There will likely be additional things that come up that we'll continue to problem-solve and work with teachers on how to best, you know, use, how we might use these materials to best support our students.
I wonder if Brandon, like moving forward next year, if we don't get maybe even quarterly updates on like how you feel like the math curriculum is going, maybe from your work team, maybe even getting some additional data for us to look at. Because your team did a very thorough job of giving us that information and going through that. I think just maybe through that implementation science so that we can actually see how it's being implemented and the progress that's being made.
Absolutely. I think that would align to the board policies that we recently adopted around implementation.
So do I have a motion?
I move to postpone this vote until a later time, just given the financial uncertainty that we face with the legislature and the voucher bill and what our finances will look like. I think we could, we could vote on this after the legislative session when we have a more clear picture of what our district finances will be moving forward. So I move that we postpone.
Is there a second? Do I have a motion to approve?
Kent will move to approve.
Menke will second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Gutman?
No.
Hauser, absent. Sayur Geyser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Five-one.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay, our last action item here.
This was the Valerius control. Again, just the ability to control entry to the building. Something that's in all of our buildings.
Do I have a motion?
Mead moves to approve.
Anderson, second.
I think we can do an all in favor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Great. Do I have a motion to open the consent agenda?
I, I request that we remove the bills list from the consent agenda per Robert's rules. A member can request or remove items from the consent agenda without requiring a second or a vote.
And the intent of that is?
I think we need to scrutinize our finances.
These are bills that are paid prior because of our net thirty, net sixty, whatever our, am I correct?
They're invoiced out and we hold checks until board approval.
I'd still like to just clarify what the higher expense items are.
Well, the pay apps are high expense items, and if the pay apps don't get paid, then it's putting the building in jeopardy of being completed.
I'm not saying we're not, I'm not gonna.
And did you submit those questions prior?
I don't need to.
So I think we are going to move to open the consent agenda. Did somebody?
I'll move to open the consent agenda.
Per point of order, per Robert's rules, you, any member of the board.
So Dan, I think if we do that, however, then things that have already, then we'll go into, Steve, can you?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying I won't agree to pay it for it.
I would do what you just did on that last, other one with the curriculum where he made the motion, see if there was a second.
There doesn't require a motion or a second to pull items from the consent agenda.
And we follow Robert's rules revised and a modified version.
But if there's not a board policy that specifically removes, that specifically spells this out, then we defer to Robert's rules revised.
I, I do not recommend this action. This is gonna put the, the district in a.
I'm not saying we're not, I'm not gonna agree to pay for it.
But we can't pay them again until February sixth.
Let's just get kind of a statement about what, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we can't vote on it tonight. I'm just saying I want to have a more clear picture of our finances.
So you want to go through the bills tonight?
Yeah, let's do it.
Every board member has an opportunity to set an appointment to come to the district and go through the bills. I go through the bills. Steve goes through, Catherine goes through.
Are you saying we're not following Robert's rules?
I'm saying I do not recommend that we don't pay bills tonight. And I do not recommend that we sit here and go bill by bill. If you looked at the bills and you have specific questions.
I just want to hear you talk about it. And it's, it's within my rights as a board member to. I just want to hear you talk about them. And it's it's within my rights as a board member to pull.
For me to talk about every single bill?
Just the higher ones.
And this is why we have a process where the board members can submit questions so that you're telling me heads up, I'm gonna ask you this question.
Part of our process is we follow Robert's rules.
So then what I will say is, we'll remove the bill list for tonight. We will have the rest of the consent agenda. Um, we will approve that consent agenda. The bill list, then, you can meet with Rosalie and Steve to talk about some of those.
We can vote on it tonight, I just want to.
What bill do you specifically have questions on?
I'd I'd like just a clarification on any bill over two thousand dollars.
Over two thousand dollars, so.
Well, hey, just the, just a second though, Rosalie. Um, the board doesn't have, I mean, the the district can approve those bills under twenty-five thousand dollars without it coming to the board. So I would say then, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars would be something you might want clarification on.
Sure.
But Dan, did you look through the bills list? Okay, so then, can you point out which ones you're questioning?
I just want a a general overview.
Our energy bill is thirty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. I can't do anything about gas service. Our payment to Des Moines Area Community College is a hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred twenty dollars. I can't do anything about our students wanting to take dual credit. That's what that's for. Mid-American Energy is sixty thousand nine hundred two dollars and seventy-six cents, and we don't have any other company to get energy from. So that one is also is not one that we can control, other than turning off lights when we leave the room.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
This was removed from the consent agenda, per my request.
So it can be removed and we can still approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Sure.
There's, I don't see anything else over twenty-five thousand dollars, other than the pay apps.
Thank you for indulging.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's a payout.
Do we have a second?
Well, I just have a clarification, so it's removed. But I would like to approve the bills, the bills list in the consent agenda. So how do we get that back in, Dan?
You you can, you can make a motion to have a vote if Dr. Decker has talked about each bill over twenty-five thousand dollars on.
The only ones I have not are the pay apps, and that's money we owe the builders and the vendors that are building Valerius.
Which was money that we have from our bond.
So you you can make a motion to approve the bills list and we can vote on that.
So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is presented? In entirety?
Well, since I removed it, we'd have to make two different votes for whatever.
So would you like to do that, then?
Sure, I move with to uh go ahead and pass the, or go ahead and vote on the bills list.
To be included in the consent agenda?
We would just have to make two different votes, because I removed it from the consent agenda, consistent with Robert's rules.
So we could vote for the consent agenda and then immediately after vote to the bills list.
Is there a second on the consent agenda?
Countful second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now can we put the bills list back in to the consent agenda? Is there a motion for that?
We would just.
No, we just need to vote separately.
I move to approve the bills list.
Menke will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Need a second?
Mead?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, government students. Will you please bring your feedback forms and maybe Jason over.